Call this public meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away in our community, especially Sissy Lynn Gonzalez, who tragically passed away this past Sunday following a devastating fire at her home on Putnam Street in North Scranton. May we keep her and her family as well as the other residents who escaped the fire in our thoughts and prayers at this time. Roll call please.
Mr. Rogan.
Here.
Mr. McAndrew.
Here.
Dr. Rothschild.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here. Mrs. Reed, please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, three eight minutes of the Scranton Redevelopment Authority meeting held January 8, 2020. Three B minutes of the regular meeting of the members of Scranton Housing Authority held January 6, 2020. Three C, resumes of City of Scranton, 2020 mayoral cabinet appointees.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have one. Applications are now available for the City of Scranton lifeguard positions. They may be picked up at City Hall, Human Resources Department, third floor, or at Weston Fieldhouse, 982 Providence Road. Any questions, you could call the Parks Department at (570) 348-4186.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have two announcements. Next Monday, February 17th is President's Day, and City Hall will be closed in observance of the federal holiday. Garbage and recycling will be on your regular pickup schedule next week. The DPW does not have President's Day off, and they will be working on Monday. On Tuesday, February 18th, at 5:45 PM, we will have a caucus in council chambers with representatives of NeighborWorks. They will present information regarding the upcoming round of the Beautiful Blocks Program and provide feedback on how the first round went as well. This is a very worthwhile neighborhood program, and we thank NeighborWorks for taking an opportunity to share this information with our residents, and this caucus will be televised on ECTV as well. Mrs. Reed, fourth order.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Just a reminder, when you come up to speak, please state your name for the record, and the first speaker, I believe, is Lee Morgan. Hard to recognize the name.
Good evening, Council. Lee Morgan. The first thing I have here today is, I had a opportunity, the mayor came in on WILK for a interview with Frank Andrews, and I had a chance to discuss with her the request I made of her and this council in regards to cutting the budget in the 511 tax revenue until the appeal is heard. And the mayor seems like a nice woman, but she doesn't think the city's reached its threshold for the ability to pay tax. And I really think that's a pretty troubling thing. The other thing I have here is, I've been studying some of these, I've got part of this here, some of the agreements with the parking authority and the garages and just, you know, an awful lot of things, like the sewer authority sale, all these things that have taken place over the course of the last couple of years during the last administration. And I just find it amazing that a council would move all this legislation to the detriment of the residents and never study it and understand the ramifications for the ordinary property owners that live in the city. One person, it seems, has hired an attorney and has been rather successful, but I think that people should really consider going to court and challenging all these sales and overturning every single one of them, considering the chief executive officer of the City of Scranton was indicted for corruption. And when you read these agreements, I don't know how anybody on council could have ever agreed that they were in the best interest of one resident in this city. Not one resident. And when you take a look at the Scranton School District, anybody who sat on that board, almost going back 35 years, because that's how I start going to meetings, I was opposed to the construction of the new school. And when you understood where they were building the school, the amount of money they were paying to build the school, the reason for the closures of Central and North Scranton, and the mismanagement of the Scranton School District, and the amount of debt they were moving under, and their ability to pay, you know, it was a waste of time. It was only going to bring harm to the residents. And you know, the most wonderful thing in this whole thing is that the state constitution, and the federal one for that matter, I think it gives an avenue of opportunity for the people or one person. I don't even think you need to be a lawyer to challenge an overturn, going to be real honest with you. The only thing is, it's all going to come back, and you know, to the residents. And you know, it's nice to put a pretty little suit on and pretend like you're moving in the best interest of your constituents, but look at the city and look at the tragedy that's taking place in the Scranton School District. Can you imagine being a school board director and now there's people starting lawsuits against the district because of mismanagement? But look at all of the money that's been sucked out of every single one of those classrooms and say that you ever empowered one child in this district, just one. So does it really matter whether you get elected if you don't have an ability to govern? Does it? I mean, what's the great accomplishment by raising money and knocking on people's doors if you get elected and when you get here? You don't have one clue about what you're going to do. And that's where I think we are with this new administration. We're going to, a judge has already warned you that you're violating the law, and it's great to take an appeal to that, but don't you think you should stop collecting that tax until a higher court agrees that you can collect it? Because if you lose, the same people that you've been taxing, you're going to have to tax again to pay them back. And when you start reading some of these agreements, where are our 500 parking spots? And look at Neyog Park. The recreational authority is going to give them the deal of a lifetime to park there for free, where if we park out on the street, I pay $2 or whatever it was an hour. And there's not one vacant spot in the city without the need to pay parking fees.
Thank you. Next speaker is Norma Jeffries.
Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And I want to start off first tonight by giving a shout out to the students of Scranton and Northeast School and the, where did they go? West Side and the Scranton School District over in South Side, because those kids were great. When they showed them getting off the bus, and the kids were lined up in the hallways to welcome them into the schools. So I say a shout out to those kids, that they adjusted very well to their situation. Also to the PTA, and they gave them a nice dance and get together Friday night at the school, and the kids looked so happy that they were together again. And I just give them all a shout out and a thank you and a kudos, because as I looked at them getting off the bus, you know, those are our future. They could be sitting up there and counsel, and they could be our mayor of the city. They are our future. So I was just so happy for them as they seemed to adjust to that movement, to those different schools. So the second thing I want to talk about was the parking meters. I'm still on the parking meters, only because I'm working on something, and I either go to the library or downtown. And I'll tell you, I'm spending some money in the meters. And if I put $2 in and I only use 15 minutes, then the rest of that money is in there. I'm a retired person, so I don't have a whole lot of money to spread around. So I looked in the agreements and things, still trying to find the information about the zone, because I think you had said, Mr. Donahue, that it was zone. So I have all of the paperwork, all the things that were signed, and I did a Google search on the word "zone" on all those documents, and it all came back as zero. So I wasn't able to find anything that explained the zone. And it certainly would help me out if I could know what the zones are.
So the zones are just based off of the hours. Most of them are two-hour parking, but there are 10-hour meters. I forget exactly where those are at the moment, but there are 10-hour meters.
Well, I don't need 10 hours, but I need to run around the city.
So that's a different zone than the two-hour limit zone. That's the only difference, as it was explained to me. So it won't say Zone 1, Zone 2, but it will say like maximum two hours.
Yes, it does say that.
Yes. So that's, anywhere where it says maximum two hours, that's all the same zone, based off what I understand on it.
So, because the reason I'm concerned, I don't know if you've gone down there to use any of the meters or not, but when you put your money in the meters, you know, you get the opt, can I just give you a copy of this? This is my receipt. (inaudible). And you see where it says those three little digits up there? And I wondered, I said, is that the zone? Is it F101, one day when I parked, and then the other was the three digits? So I didn't know what that was. I thought, well, maybe that's the zone. I don't know. But I'm trying desperately to find out, because I don't want a $25 ticket.
I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know. I'm pretty sure there's a map someplace. Councilman Donahue is actually looking it up now, but we will get this to NDC and we'll have an answer for you, similar to the last one.
Okay. Well, maybe, you know, there's an explanation of it, but I didn't see anything in the information you gave me, though. You know, and like I said, I did the Google search on the word "zone." So I gave him my receipt.
Norma, sorry to interrupt. So I also use the parking downtown, and I have them text me the information after I've purchased parking there, and so I'm just looking back, and I used it today, and you know, I have a number on there, 2M0, M0201. Before that, it was L9503. So it seems like it's just a random assortment of, you know, two letters and then a few numbers afterwards, so I, you know, I don't think there's anything.
You don't think it has anything to do with the zone or anything like that?
No, I don't believe so. Yeah.
Yeah, because one of the things when you put your, well, you know, then, Dr. Rothschild, when you put your money in, it does say right on the screen that this is for this lot only. I tried to get a picture of it, but it's so quick, I couldn't get a picture of it. But it does say right on the meter when you put your money in, that it's for this zone only. I mean, this lot only. Okay? So that was the thing. I'm still trying to find that out, because I don't want to get a ticket. And then my final thing for tonight, I just wanted an update on the street signs. I guess I'm all into streets, because like I said, I'm around the streets in the city so often. And I did get the letter, you know, that you had emailed to me, and I don't know if it was ever approved, because the last line on the letter says, can I just finish this line?
You can, yeah, sure. You finish your thought.
Okay. Because the last line says, "Based on the above information, the Office of the Business Administrator recommends the approval of the proposed submitted by KS Engineers and the subsequent contract with the firm." So was it ever approved? And then they also talk about a grant that was submitted on July 31st of 2018 to help with this, and I was just wondering the status of that.
Sure. If you could leave that with Kathy, I'll have an answer for you next week. Okay? Have a nice night. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Jeffries. Next speaker is Joan Hodawanitz.
Joan Hodawanitz, City resident and taxpayer. Have we gotten a date yet for Rainey and Rainey and the members of the administration who prepared the audit to attend a caucus, so you could talk to them?
Yeah, we have not yet.
You're still working on it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We've asked, I think, twice now.
Do you, last Friday was the deadline for letters of interest for the zoning board of appeals. Did the city get any takers on that?
No. Mrs. Reed, we did not get any, no, there was no interest.
Okay. All right. If you would, in fifth order, just update us on the MS4 permit and Mr. DiSarno's self-audit. I found it very entertaining, but my primary question is, is when is he going to make some kind of payment to the city? I thought that when he retired, he was either going to pay or something was going to happen. I mean, he owes us at least $559. So are we waiting for Moretti to come up with an answer? I hope they don't let this drop.
Yeah, no, I think we're waiting for the final audit.
Okay.
And we'll see what happens.
And speaking about fuel card usage, last week I mentioned that the analysis for December 24th through January 23rd of the $14,000, $10,702.93 was unassigned.
Yeah, I have an answer on that.
Good. You can give me that in fifth order then.
Sure.
I appreciate that. I saw also in the paper that the city is suing Ken Bond. My first comment is, it's about damn time. My other comment is, will there be other lawsuits against other people who are also delinquent? He may be the most egregious, but he's not the only one.
Yeah, I don't know. We haven't been briefed on that, but...
I hope, if you would pass back to Mayor Cognetti and her staff, that, you know, Ken needs some company in the hot seat. And I saw also in the paper that February 28th will be the deadline for objections to the city trampling its LST tax. I don't know whether or not the objections will carry any weight, and let's assume that they do. Does the city have a Plan B if they cannot triple the LST? And if so, I would like to know what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tom Coyne.
Tom Coyne. I have a question, if anyone knows it. Do we know the current tipping fee for the trash in the City of Scranton?
I'm sorry, what was that? I couldn't hear you.
The current tipping fee, the amount paid per ton for both recyclables and trash collection. Do we have the current tipping fees?
Yeah, I don't have it up the top of my head. It's in the 2020 budget, so if I looked at it really quick, I could tell you, but I'll have that for you next week. I just don't, I don't want to give you a wrong figure.
That's perfectly fine. I expect as much. Second, thank you for putting up the resumes for the workers that are to be reviewed. And looking at them, I noticed the IT department's resume and did not see on him continuing education at all for an extended period of time. It would be nice if the city considered putting a small fund in there just to send him out, whether it's B-Side Philly, which is a, deals with penetration testing and all sorts of IT security and government, just some sort of local conference to send him to for continuing education. It doesn't have to be a big amount, but it would be nice if there was something allocated for the IT department to go out there at least once a year and pick up some information outside. Last of all, in reading the, see the resolution for the Howard Gardner Multiple Intelligence Charter School that is currently on the docket. It is a bond for $5 million for improvement to the charter school. I understand that the city is rubber stamp, would rubber stamp it, because the city is not obligated for it. But taking a look at it, that it's in joint with the Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority these funds are coming from to make this bond, it makes me pause and consider when we have recently looked at schools that have lead and asbestos in it. And funding from the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority is not being tapped in for that purpose as well. I mean, no more of an emergency is schools being closed down because they cannot be used because of hazardous materials. And if these funds are available, rather than allocating them to charter schools for some building of projects, it might be more prudent to take a look and see whether or not some of these funds are available for critical fixes in our six schools. And if this was known in its negligence, with the suits coming up against the school board that have just started to trickle in, insurance won't cover that. Insurance will not cover negligence. That's usually part of every single document put in for insurance. That's a big concern for litigation that might hit taxpayers as well when they're already taxed to the brink. Reading this proposed $5 million grant just made me think that there may be money out there that we're not actually capitalizing on for needs of the community that may need to be reflected on. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. There are no other speakers on the sign-in sheet. Would anyone else in the audience like to address council?
Good evening, Marie Schumacher. As I was late arriving tonight, I don't know whether you announced, whether the Stevenson Lee Emergency Resolution was brought off the table.
No, we haven't received the budget yet. We're going to have an executive session with Stevenson Lee next week to discuss the litigation, and then it's my understanding that we'll have the budget next Tuesday, or prior to next Tuesday, and then we'll bring it back for a vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, two weeks, I'm sorry, Mrs. Schumacher. So it won't be next week, it'll be the 25th.
Oh, okay. Another month down the tubes, yeah. Regarding 7B tonight, I have always sort of admired our police chief and been impressed that he goes out to a lot of the community meetings and does things, but I would like to request that you not go ahead with his, that you table that 7B, because I don't believe that they, he kept the promises that I heard him make back in the cubbyhole as far as the extension of the contract through 2021 and what the police department was to do in return for that. And part of it is because I don't think the whole thing was handled properly. There was no separate account, for instance, for the, I know they had a fancy name, but it was the code enforcers that were sent out, and they were supposed to make a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, bring in fines for that amount. I don't know whether they did or not. I can't even tell from the, pardon? How much?
I have the figure off the top of my head, but I believe this year was a substantial amount, or from 2019. The civilian parking enforcement?
Mm-hmm.
That was up, I think.
I'd like to see it from 15 up to now, though.
Well, it's in, if you look at the budgets, every, there's a line item in the budget for it.
Well, it says, it says police fines. It doesn't say they are just from those. There are other fines, but the police...
Yeah, I believe it's, okay. Well, I'll take a look at it.
Well, I'd like to know that. Also, have you found a policy for the police with manpower and renting, you know, doing a rent-a-cop?
Our offices, yeah. Our office is, Lori, Mrs. Reed is still supposed to have a conversation with Chief Graziano on that, so we haven't gotten to that yet, but I do have the figures from 2019 on reimbursable overtime.
Okay. We can, in fifth order?
Sure.
Okay, good. Thank you. And I'm concerned that a lot of things are getting swept under the rug from last year, and it's like, okay, we start a new year. One of them is this building. I have not heard a word about whether or not this building, we're staying, you're staying in this building, whether it's going to be refurbished or not. And one of the things, especially with the schools, this is an old building, too. We've had the maintenance officer for the city here talking about what terrible conditions we're in, and one of the things that I have a concern for is whether there's mold and whether there, I wouldn't think there'd be any asbestos on this floor or the floor below, but I certainly would not want that child that is nurseryed down on the first floor to come up with a problem because of mold. And now I, so my first concern is for the child, but I also, as a taxpayer of a distressed city, I would like to know that we've been indemnified in return for the mayor being allowed to have a nursery in her office, that we are, there's an indemnification that we will not be sued if anything turns up, that she has brought her child here, and if something happens, it happens. So I would think that would be good. Also, I looked at the, I don't know if anybody up there looked at, from the 28th, there was the financial report for 2019, and we are not in very good shape. We're not tracking to the exit plan numbers, and I really feel badly that we are looking like we're going down the tubes, especially with all these problems. We've got stormwater, City Hall, we haven't done the hub, and I really would like to see how we're going to finish out this year and the following years. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident, tax paid, fees paid. You know, somebody keeps coming in here talking about cutting the budget 30%, and I would often wonder, you know, years back, we had a lot of consternation with our public employees, and it wound up in court for years, and we lost. So I don't know how somebody could even mention cutting the budget by 30%. You have minimum manning clauses and so forth, so I really don't know what they're talking about. We lost in court, and that's it. So our schools are in the paper again, and I agree with what Mr. Coyne said. Why are we handing out $5 million grant to some school that isn't connected with the public system? And the Electric City and Mellon Building were in the paper today, or a few days ago, I'm sorry about that. But once again, now, I have a question. Are they going to go tax exempt? You know, at 36%, tax-exempt buildings in the city, do we really need? So what's done is done, but I think it's time that we just close the loophole. If somebody doesn't want to pay taxes in this town, maybe they're not necessary. They're not a necessary fixture. That's all there is to it. Can't keep coming back to the same people. In that way, the prior speaker is right. Can't keep coming back to the same people with an ever-expanding tax-exempt base, especially when it's for private interests and it's not a medical... especially when it's for private interests and it's not a medical facility or a school or something like that, or college. That's just filling somebody else's pocket. And last week, the bicycle business was mentioned again downtown. And I'm wondering, how many one-way streets do we have? You realize that all of those corners will have to have an addition of stoplights to them. All of them. So that could translate into, who knows how much more money we have to shell out for this. And even if somebody pays for part of it or whatever, I don't see how it's even achievable. And it's a very bad idea. We have rail trails, we have all kinds of things, we have parks and courts, but they really shouldn't be in the middle of rush hour traffic, riding a bike around. And once again, well, I'd like to speak about Comcast. You know, I was down at Walmart a couple of days ago, and it was $75 to sign up for Walmart for Xfinity Triple Play. That's telephone, computer, and television. Now, I called about my bill, which is $250 a month for the same thing. You know, they want to get them on board and sign up. And it's the company's policy that I would have to drop Comcast for three months before I qualified for that $75 a month deal for a year. How come they can afford somebody with this kind of coverage and then charge somebody else nearly three times as much? It's totally ridiculous, and it has to change. It may have to change on a federal level, but it's, I'm to a point where I think I'm just going to boot Comcast out of my house. And furthermore, some of the, my favorite stations, the documentaries have turned to mush. And they're, they've pulled them, Military Channel, History Channel, and Investigative Discovery Channel. You like Joe Kenda? Pat?
I, I watch a lot of those shows as well.
Joe Kenda? He's my favorite cop in the whole wide world. I'd be a little worried if I killed somebody and he was on my tail. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night. Anybody else? Mrs. Reed?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Rogan, any comments or motions?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Mr. McAndrew, do you have any motions or comments?
Yeah, I have a few. As Chairman of Public Safety, we'd like to compliment the efforts of Detective Fusco and fellow Officer Scott Stelmack and Lenny Nemeka for putting on a crime scene investigation and K-9 unit demonstration at police headquarters yesterday for an area Boy Scout troop. I'm a bigger fan of this type of community engagement. Also, last week, Mr. Coyne, he posed a question about our city's readiness or if there is a plan to, to deal with the potential threat of the coronavirus. So Acting Fire Chief Al Lucas responded that at this time, the Pennsylvania Department of Health is only recommending that we treat coronavirus prevention the same way as we do for the flu. But also, Act, Acting Chief Lucas did provide us with information sheets from the CDC. Okay, so I believe these would be great tools of education and awareness if the city, if the city administration would post these on the city's website. And I'm requesting Mrs. Reed to reach out and see if they can do that. They're very informative sheets of what, where, how, why, and about awareness. So I hope that they get on the website for you guys. Also, I'm also very happy that our city's administration has taken legal action against the delinquent landlord Ken Batten. I hope this is the first of many, and, and efforts to recruit delinquent garbage fees continues. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. Dr. Rothschild, any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few comments. First off, I know that we had a moment of silence at the beginning of the meeting, but I just would like to provide my condolences to the families and the people that were affected by the fire that was on Putnam Street this week. I previously lived on the same block, just a few doors down, so that really came close to home for me. We had rented a property on there shortly before we bought our home a few years ago. So I am very sorry to hear of, of their loss. A few other points, last week, we had a resident come in here who explained that she had some concerns regarding the, the Penridge Kapow Sav Pool. And I have been delving into that further, and I contacted OECD, and I'm setting up a meeting with our Parks and Rec Department and our grant writer to see what possible grants might be appropriate to use for that space, to turn that into something else. That's a project that I'm, I'm very interested and invested in. And in addition to that, I've previously spoken to this, but working with the University of Scranton, their students, I just spoke in a market and marketing research class tonight at the University of Scranton, and they are going to work on developing a pilot study for starting internally, and hopefully something that we can use later on with the other colleges and universities in our region. But the study is going to work on surveying students and alumni to figure out why students may not stay in Scranton after graduation and, and what factors could motivate them to, to make that decision. So that is my update on that. And then one other thing that I wanted to bring up, and I know that it's been brought up to counsel before, but I really think that this is, is necessary for the city of Scranton, the C Clicks, the C Click Fix Program, or using a similar program like that to track complaints and, and issues throughout the city. I think that's something that we need to bring to light again. We would really benefit from having that program to help us organize those complaints. And I'm hoping that the mayor's administration is willing to work together with us on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Councilman Dunnehy, any motions or comments?
Yes, just briefly, a couple DPW updates. I talked to Director Gallagher this morning. First off, there are red bins available now down at DPW for anyone that needs new red bins. I know we got a couple of questions about a month ago, and the city was out. We had received a new order in, so they're available down at DPW on Poplar Street. Also, on the paper recycling, there should be a calendar released by the end of the week outlining a new procedure for collecting paper and cardboard. It's more than likely going to be, you know, commingo one week, paper commingo, and then cardboard. That's the way it's looking now, but that's going to be announced probably in the next week, and more than likely it will take effect March sec, the week of March 2nd. So for next week, for paper and cardboard, you could put them both out together for this one last week. We also got a couple complaints about the 17 and 1800 blocks of Clearview Street. They were paved last year, and now Pennsylvania American Water is going in and replacing storm drains. So the reasoning for that they were allowed to do that is the storm drains are connected to the combined system, and there are, there is some sewage backflow into a couple of the homes in that area, so it's considered an emergency. But Pennsylvania American Water has agreed to pave those two blocks curb-to-curb once the new storm drains are installed. And that should happen in the spring then, because I think they should be start, I think they were starting today on that project, and then working over the next few weeks. And then once the blacktop factory's open, they'll get those paved. And I believe that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dunnehy. Thanks for coming tonight, everyone. Just have a few things to mention. The first, Ms. Hodawanitz asked about the MS4 permit. It's really just the same update that I had last week. Ms. Hodawanitz, nothing really has changed. We haven't received anything new, but just kind of to recap, the new permit would be good for five years, once it's issued. Mr. King, who's the city planner, who's kind of running the, the show here with the MS4 permit, he needs to speak with the mayor to provide her and her, the administration, an update. Once he has done that, he's going to coordinate with Mrs. Reed about coming to a caucus to provide us further update and information. The city did apply, as you know, in May 2019. In August, the city was in contact with DEP wi, in regards to finishing up some items from the Pollution Reduction Plan. He, at that point, has not received an official report yet from DEP regarding the inspection in October, but they do have 80 to 90 other communities that are going through the exact same process. So our permit does stay valid until a new one is issued. So that's the update on that. In terms of the reimbursable overtime from the police department for 2019 that Ms. Schumacher had asked about, we came in at $289,994.39 for last year. So that's money that was reimbursed back to the city for police overtime. I'd also like at this time to make a motion that city council send a letter to John Basaliga from the marketplace at Steamtown, asking him for a detailed update on plans for the improvement of the Elect, the Electric City Garage.
Second.
There's a second on the question? On the question, I had asked last week that Solicitor Hayes draft a letter, which he did. This was circulated to the other council members. It will be placed on our agenda next week in third order, so everyone can take a look at it. Basically, what we're looking for is the construction schedule with respect to the Electric City Garage. We're asking for that within 30 days of this course, when the correspondence is being sent out. We'd like an explanation of the work, which has already been completed since they, the company acquired the Electric City Garage along with a projected timeline for completing the repair and renovation work on that facility. As I had mentioned a few weeks ago, I've been concerned now for the last, really, two years that it doesn't seem like we're moving the ball in terms of repairing that garage. And as some of you may remember, the Parking Authority gave, basically gave a grant in, in terms of $2.85 million toward renovations of the Electric City Garage, and it was sold for a dollar. So to me, at that time, when we were voting on the deal, you know, the garage was in shambles, according to everyone that had talked before council. So why it's, it's taking this long to repair when there's money available, I, I still don't understand. So hopefully, we can get an answer on that. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, and so moved. The second thing I wanted to mention, and I know Councilman Dunnehy is Chairperson for Public Works, has been in contact with Mr. Cerebro, and I believe is meeting with him this week. I had said to Mr. Cerebro that it was my belief that there was an effort by the previous administration under Mayor Evans to look at the flooding in Kaiser Valley. And Mrs. Reed was in contact with the grant manager for the city of Scranton, Maggie Perry. She did reply that there was a meeting last November with the prev, the previous business administrator, Mr. Gallagher, our DPW director, the city engineer, Mr. Poshus, discussing all the flooding issues in Kaiser Valley. And they, at that time, were going to put together a proposal for grant funding for flood control and mitigation. But before they could do that, there had to be an engineering study. There was a meeting scheduled within the last week to discuss this project and a number of other projects related to DPW. It was canceled, and it had to be rescheduled. But Mrs. Perry is going to inform us regarding what the plan is, at least in terms of the grant funding, when that becomes available. The other thing, and I did email this to Mr. Cerebro, was in regards to something that is already in the works in terms of grant money the city put in for a grant in the amount of $418,774 to be used to install new and more efficient inlets and larger pipes to adequately convey the runoff on Brig Street to Kaiser Creek, its original outlet point. This is a project that will probably take quite some time, but that is something that we're hopeful that the city receives the grant money and that they're able to complete that project. So that is an update on that. The third thing that I had in terms of a question that came up regarding the, the gas card analysis. Just pull it up here real quick. I believe Mrs., or Ms. Hodawanitz asked about the unassigned funds. Let me see if I can find it. All my paperwork here. I have it someplace here, I don't know where I put it. There is an answer for that. Let's see. This is what happens when you have all this paperwork in front of you. Yep, there it is. So the deputy controller was in contact with Mrs. Reed, along with another employee, the internal auditor, Mrs. Gallagher, in the controller's office. And the unassigned portion is a title for another grouping of gas card users by name and department, similar to miscellaneous, but it's titled as unassigned. These individuals were provided gas cards after the cards had already been grouped by department. It's not a literal definition, according to the controller's office employees. Including in the unassigned grouping are three house cards for police patrol vehicles on Music Street, South 7th, and South Main Avenue. Attached is the individual user in the unassigned category, along with the financial summary indicating the grouping by all departments. And they also wanted to mention to us that the monetary difference in totals is because Sunoco gives the city a rebate based on gas usage. They also wanted to clarify that the rebate is an adjustment for tax. So the city is actually tax-exempt, we don't, we don't actually pay a tax. So hopefully, that answers your question. If you need any follow-up, I do have the, the email that she had sent. And I, oh, the only other thing I wanted to mention was, we did receive the list of streets that are proposed to be paved through the OECD Spring 2020 Paving Project. Bids are going to be open February 26th for this project, and we did receive a list of the streets. Most of them are in North Scranton. There's 12 of them, and then there's two alternate ones that they put in on Rockwell Avenue. So I do know, I travel these streets a lot in North Scranton, and all of these streets are in pretty bad condition. So I think it's good that the administration is focusing on this area, and then obviously, hopefully, in the, the city's paving project, they focus on some other areas that are also in need. And that's all I have for tonight.
Just to add to that.
Sure.
I did talk to Mr. Gallagher today about the city's paving project, and those should be going out. The bids for that should start going out in the next couple of weeks. Last year, we didn't get those out until September, and paving didn't start until October. So we're hoping to get them out earlier this year, so we're not in a crunch at the end of the year.
Thank you. Mrs. Reed?
5B for introduction and resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to enter into a loan agreement and make a loan from the Economic Development Administration revolving loan program. Project number is noted in an amount not to exceed $30,000 to Ritz Hospitality LLC to assist an eligible project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I'm very happy to see the work that the owners are doing on the Ritz property in Scranton. I have frequented there before. I've, I recently went to like a movie premiere there inside of the theater, and I'm, I'm very excited to see that the, the work that they may do with this, with this loan.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction and resolution approving, in accordance with Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended, a plan of financing of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority and declaring that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the city of Scranton for the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority to undertake a project for Howard Gardner Multiple Intelligence Charter School.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction and resolution authorizing appointment of Stephanie L. Bressler, Ph.D., 1402 East Gibson Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as a member of the Board of Ethics, effective January 29, 2020. Dr. Bressler will be replacing Joan Hodawanitz, who resigned effective November 25. Dr. Bressler will be replacing Joan Hodawanitz, who resigned, effective November 25, 2019. Dr. Bressler will fill the unexpired term of Joan Hodawanitz, which is scheduled to expire August 31, 2022.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question, I've had the privilege of knowing Dr. Bressler for several years now. She's also a neighbor of mine, lives just a block away, and I commend her on the community work that she's done in Scranton, including working with Catholic Social Services, many of the refugee and immigrant communities here in Scranton, and I'm very excited to see her appointment come across here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, six A, no business at this time. Seventh order, seven A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file of the Council Number Three, 2020, amending file of the Council Number Two, 1983, and ordinance amending file of the Council Number Thirty-Nine, 1977, entitled "An Ordinance Establishing Rates of Discount and Penalties on Taxes Due on Real Estate to the City of Scranton by Amending Certain Provisions Relating to Discounts, the Discount Period, Installment Payments, and Penalties on Taxes Due on Real Estate to the City of Scranton."
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As Chair for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item seven A.
Second.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven A legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number Six, 2020, appointment of Carl Graziano, 418 Wilbur Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18508, to the position of police chief, effective January 6, 2020.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven B legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven C for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number Seven, 2020, appointment of Alan Lucas, 2722 Bernie Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, to the position of acting fire chief, effective January 6, 2020.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven, item seven C?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven C legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven D for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number Eight, 2020, appointment of Dennis Gallagher, 311 Patterson Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, to the position of Director of the Department of Public Works, effective January 6, 2020.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven D?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven D legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven E for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number Nine, 2020, appointment of Jessica L. Escri, Esquire, 44 Snook Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, as city solicitor, effective January 6, 2020.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven E?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven E legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven F for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number Ten, 2020, appointment of Stephanie Pisco, Esquire, 2001 Rig Street, Dunmore, Pennsylvania, 18502, excuse me, 18512, as Assistant City Solicitor, Chief of Staff, effective January 6, 2020.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven F?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven F legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven G for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number Eleven, 2020, appointment of Wayne Beck, 105 Yessu Drive, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, to the position of City Treasurer, effective January 6, 2020.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven G?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven G legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven H for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number Twelve, 2020, appointment of Thomas Olesky, 1124 Rock Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, to the position of acting Director of the Department of Licensing Inspections and Permits, effective January 6, 2020.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven H?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven H legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven I for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number Thirteen, 2020, appointment of Frank Swetnicki, 708 O'Hara Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, to the position of Information Technology Manager, effective January 6, 2020.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven I?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven I legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven J for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number Fourteen, 2020, appointment of Mary Pat Ward, 1322 Schleger Streets, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, to the position of Executive Director, Office of Economic and Community Development, effective January 6, 2020.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven J?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven J legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven K for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number Fifteen, 2020, appointment of Brian Fallon, 719 River Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, to the position of Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation, effective January 6, 2020.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven K?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven K legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven L for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number Sixteen, 2020, appointment of Patrick J. Sheridan, CPA, 106 Stone Ridge Circle, Clark Summit, Pennsylvania, 18411, to the position of interim business administrator, effective January 6, 2020.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven L?
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question, just to reiterate what I mentioned last week, I have no problem with supporting a residency waiver for, specifically for a business administrator. It's too important of a position to just stick strictly to the residency requirements, but I do think there is a residency requirement and a waiver process for a reason. I probably would be voting yes for this appointment if a waiver had been attached. The excuse of, it's a temporary appointment, residency doesn't matter, it doesn't fly with me. I think it opens the door for any employment in the city less than six months to be a non-resident. So for those reasons, I am gonna vote against the appointment. I do wanna stress, though, it is not a vote against Mr. Sheridan, it's a vote against the process and not being followed properly. We did also, I did also inquire with the administration if Mr. Sheridan would pay the city wage tax. We didn't hear back yet. I know Mr. Bolzoni, when he was a out-of-town business administrator, did pay the city wage tax, so I hope that Mr. Sheridan would make that same arrangement again. It sounds like it was a voluntary thing that Mr. Bolzoni did, but I do think that's